Wonderful, fun Monday.
Ross still school on Thanksgiving. You had to let it in, Liz.
Oh, Thanksgiving weekend.
Well, she had you. Did you volunteer?
Oh, I didn't even. So much so wrong. I'm surprised I don't get to do it.
It's making me so mad.
Our fence is.
Are you gonna nature way? Thank goodness.
Yeah, why don't you, do you ready to start?
I thought earlier you had a picture sticking out of it.
I don't know if there is any legality into stopping. An established neighborhood crossing two hours, you know. That with new owners and new homes, but. Understanding the realities behind that might be useful because it's gonna come.
I'll sit down for him to sign. And just a quick question, so. If there is a request in the future, what is the process that would occur at that point? If there's a request to connect. Which is at this point been denied. And then the council voted to close the road.
The original request to connect was, was, was approved. It did not live up to the conditions of the approval, that approval lapsed. Following that, the council voted to temporarily close the, the road. The way can the other item goes on your agenda? And probably you would all know about it. It would not necessarily be a public hearing. Because I don't think you need a public hearing to take off a temporary closure. Doesn't mean it would certainly be a public meeting. A comment as you choose, even though it's not a public hearing. And you'd make your decisions. Is that the process you're you're.
Because there's no public hearing, there's no requirement to notify, but could we make sure that when that's going to be on the agenda at a minimum? That Stephanie is aware well in advance.
Yeah.
So that she can then communicate that.
Yeah. And we've been in touch with the Martins in the past as a conduit to the to the neighborhood and we could certainly do that as well.
Just to clarify one thing, when we say temporary, I thought it was temporary indefinite.
We have not not closed the road. We've not abandoned it. And it changes ownership patterns and all that. We temporarily closed it. It stays temporarily closed until the council decides to reopen it. So it is indefinite, but it's I can't say it's permanent because all it takes is a vote, you know, take a vote of the council to change that.
So can the council truly stop that road from opening? Or is that that stayed involved?
The state statutes authorize the town regulate the flow of traffic on town roads.
As long as DOT is not involved.
So so the question.
To our attorney today, I'm sorry to speak over you, Molly.
Yeah, so the question is Brook Brookview is a town maintained and owned road.
As is Aspen, yes.
Now, right. We we have full responsibility for that. And is that shared with Gibsonville? So the property owners who own Gibsonville, who own Brookview. We service the road for them.
Um, in the area we are talking about, it is solely our responsibility. I would have to verify as you get out toward the Westbrook end. Or the at that point. The municipal boundary does some weird things. Like I won't swear that it's.
I think the first nine or eleven homes are in Gibsonville.
Yes. Yeah.
So if. And my understanding is we maintain for snow clearing, whatever else.
That's my belief as well. I wouldn't swear to it. I'd want to verify.
Somebody.
Aspen would not. Aspen would be our full responsibility.
Somebody brought up legality and I know that you had a conversation with our attorney today. I don't know if that's something you're able to share or not.
I certainly I can if you want me to.
Well, just the options that we had available. Somebody asked if it was legal for us to close it and I just.
The answer is yes.
And the answer is yes. Okay, I we don't have to go into specifics. I just wanted to know.
As I said, state statute authorizes towns to. Gives towns the authority to regulate flow of traffic on town roads. And in this case, the council has exercised that authority by issuing a temporary closure order. It it could be, and there are options of. Opening it with other regulations in terms of through traffic or no through traffic, things like that. Temporary closure seems to be the the cleanest way. And it'll stay right where it is.
But because owned and maintained by town of Elon, the statute's clear. That you have the authority to make the decision to close it permanently. That's how I read the statute. Not an attorney, but that's how I read the statute.
Well, is it permanently is a different step. That abandons the right of way. And the property then reverts to the ownership on the side of the right of way.
Thank you. I'm having no other signatures on the list to speak. Somebody. All right, we will close the public comment section. Moving on to old business revision to chapter six animal ordinance.
We are back on agenda tonight to hopefully close out some old business pertaining to the revision of our chapter six animal ordinance. You will have the paperwork in front of you, but as part of the history, the town had an ongoing issue with a nuisance and dangerous dog in the. In Forest Creek neighborhood, starting around October two thousand twenty-two. The dog bit two different people within a four month timeframe, made residents in the subdivision feeling very unsafe in their own community. The owners were hostile and uncooperative with law enforcement's efforts to mitigate the situation, quarantine the dog, et cetera. That we we were also not successful because of their uncooperative manner to seize the dog. Or the quarantine or to make appropriate charges. The state statute, as we were delving into this, because again, we don't have dedicated animal control. So as a learning experience for us, we realized that there were very specific details that the statute. Laid out before us after talking to our district attorney or assistant district attorney on the matter. Like with everything, the state can be broad and ordinances can make better restrictions. And as we kind of felt our way through or traversed the situation, we realized that. There are some issues with our ordinances that we would like to clean up. The incidents obviously prompted us to to look at revising our current animal ordinance. To enhance the safety and security of our surrounding communities, specifically when dealing with vicious or dangerous dogs. While the proposed changes that I that I have in this chapter six may not have impacted all of the nuances as we we faced with this particular incident. I think it certainly would have provided our our officers the ability to be a little bit more responsive and proactive. Should similar circumstances arise. The proposed changes today, and I can go through them if you want, but it's a little tedious. You guys let me know what you would like to hear, but the changes proposed today include new language that gives officers the authority to be more proactive. In impounding any dogs running at large without first issuing a warning. That was the biggest issue that we that we faced with that particular situation. The new language also allows officers to impound a dog. Yet the dog is in question of being deemed dangerous, allowing us to then pursue our investigation to figure out if this dog is truly a nuisance or a danger to the community. It also makes it specifically unlawful for any person to refuse or fail to surrender an animal for quarantine. The revised ordinance provides. Provided today incorporates more detail, more robust detail in what is considered a nuisance animal. Our previous definition did not really go into a lot of detail and some other minor changes to clean up sentence structure. And provide some free standing penalty sections. The town attorney, our specific town attorney did was consulted with these changes. He was. He had no issue with the language being presented. He had, which we'll talk about later. He had some other suggestions, but. What I'm asking you to do today is to approve the language. That that I've provided to you for chapter six. Obviously, you can look it over, give me some rebuttals, some revisions that you would like to see, and I can come back with another draft. Or vote to maintain the ordinance as we have it today. And I can answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions here. So looking through it, I remember that when it first got brought to us, there is something about. Officers having the power to put down an animal. I mean, I didn't see any of that in here, so.
That was it. So when we when we looked at this, we looked at what. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. What other municipalities doing? That was something that came that we wanted to present to you all to see. How much authority do you want us to have? Uh, Rich and I talked together and we're both animal lovers, so. We weren't sold on that idea, but I didn't want you to to think we didn't look under every rock and present every option that Elon could take on. It was more of a an extension or exigent circumstances for emergency situations. And it's one that was adopted by Alamance County. The Alamance County, so we were looking at what they had and it and they do have something in their provision for emergency situations. I did not, the feedback I got that it was not well received, so I did not put that back in here.
So then let me ask then if would the town be protected, let's say, get a call and there there's a dog physically in the act of. And you would be able to put it down and be protected, even though it's not.
Correct. That that is, that dog is, it falls within the guidelines of not only the statute, but our current ordinance now that it is actively. And it's actively presenting behavior that's dangerous. It's 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 no different than the authority that they invested us. Should we have to have to use deadly force to protect you or a third party or ourselves? This was in one of those cases where. The dog has been deemed dangerous. It's loose and it's not actively attacking anybody, but we need to maintain that it doesn't. Maybe it's headed toward Elon Elementary School. And we're trying, we can't necessarily catch it and do other things. But no, we we would still have that ability to act if it's in the process of attacking or. Engaging to attack. You know, we don't have to be reactive in those situations.
Have a couple more. So it also said, you know, if you have to quarantine a dog or an animal during an investigation, that the owner then would be responsible for paying any of the quarantine fees. How does that work in the case of just a disgruntled neighbor constantly calling on somebody's dog? And then you take the dog, quarantine it for investigation and you need the investigation that that's just a disgruntled neighbor calling on another one. Is that person still then responsible for quarantine fees? I know that's a hypothetical.
Yeah, quarantine only applies to a situation where a dog has bitten someone and has to be quarantined for these. A nuisance dog, they're barking, they're running at large. There has to be a, there would be an investigation unless there was something that says, like in this this particular case. We had multiple complaints that the dog had charged folks that had chased people down the street. Rather than having to wait for that dog to actually act on those instincts. This would allow us to then seize the dog, conduct the investigation, but because the dog is running at large, the owner would still be liable for that. And and the county also supports that. It's in their their ordinance as well.
Which is my last question. So so in here, I saw. I've understood that we pay the county for animal control. But then I also saw in here that we have a partnership with the Burlington Animal Shelter.
We pay Burlington.
We pay Burlington.
We don't actually, and those fees are to support the shelter. It's not actually for animal control or any services that they provide. It's to have a place to take strays and different things for them to hold.
And that's the seventy-five thousand dollars a year we pay and it's to Burlington. And okay, I thought it was the the county. So when we say we the county is going to help us. Get a nuisance dog and take it to Burlington.
We actually do all the work. So the county. Alamance County has an overarching ordinance that pertains to all unincorporated. Parts of of Alamance County. And because we work in partnership sometimes with the county, they did come out on this particular incident to help us round up as a mutual aid. They actually have no real responsibility to the animals inside of Elon. So I think it's just a blanket term we use, you know, the county is going to help us or we're referencing. County code because they do have probably the largest animal control. But our our funds go to Burlington Animal Shelter, who also works with Alamance County. All the other municipalities are in partnership and and. Get a little, they have to pay a piece of the pie to to be able to access the shelter. And that's all a part of that seventy-five, seventy-seven thousand dollars we pay in.
So does that, y'all have the equipment to handle?
No, we have a catch fall. We have some small animal traps like for cats and squirrels and stuff like that, but no, we're not, we're ill equipped for the process.
So that was my question. All important officers take on tasks that can be dangerous. You got a dog who's vicious, the ability to to surround a dog. Do they have ability to tase a dog?
Technically, yes, it's hard for a fast moving animal that's dodging. For me, in earlier years, I've I've tried that. It it it's not successful. They have. Right, and and animal control has different things such as darts, tranquilizers, things like that. We just don't have the volume of animal calls. We don't deal with it. This was a, this was a big deal for us and it was a, I can admit this was a very. Steep learning curve for us. We we had to kind of learn on the fly about what the state statute requires and didn't require. And and to your point, do we have the equipment for it? No.
You're not put a dog in the back of the patrol car, which we don't have a truck, I guess.
Well, we we.
Dangerous for.
We have prisoner confines. I mean, we we use the same thing that we would use if we arrested someone else and and a dangerous dog is a dangerous dog, but it's. The most dangerous mammal that we deal with are humans, so we we have the means, we just don't necessarily have the training or the tools. Which is something that we've started to broaden in our horizons on a little bit as we go.
And this may be a question for you or maybe who built the agenda. Why is the removal of chapter thirteen after the LMO? Is this, would it not be natural that if we had no objections and we wanted to go ahead and and pass. Chapter six, that would take care of everything you need to get rid of thirteen.
Just an error. It was just.
Oh, man, yeah. I mean, could we?
We can, we can change.
Change that around. I was just gonna say to take. Okay, I just, that was a little confusing to me. That's why I just. Because.
Me this afternoon as well, Randy.
I just went with it. You know, it's better not to. I was missing something.
I have one question. So in chapter six, now this is from the twenty twenty-three codification, but. Does it not make sense at this point to change? Mentions of the Board of Aldermen to the Town Council within this document?
And that would have been on, that that would have been my error, but yes, it does make more sense to do that while we're making the changes already. You go ahead and do that. I was more focused on the content, so I didn't make that change already.
I I was, as I read through it, I thought it was very, very well done. I thought. Seem to cover a thing that I talked about and I'm glad to see that. Even though they still have the right to put an animal down, it's not explicitly a part of it and things like that. The other question. Maybe I just missed it, but you listed every animal but chickens, I guess, so. Have chickens in there yet?
Come on, I didn't even approach that. I've heard other other municipalities get into a really heated debate about chickens.
A lot of people. How far will catch?
It is, it is currently allowed.
It is allowed. Okay, that's why I wasn't.
They just can't be like running loose, right? It can be like in a fenced yard or something of that nature.
One more. Thank you. With with this. Updated ordinance. Walk us through the scenario that we had in Forest Creek, how this would. Help that situation, the steps of being there.
Yes, the way the way our ordinance was written left a few things to be desired in that the state specifically. Implicitly defines a potentially dangerous and dangerous dog. And a potentially dangerous is one that. I, as chief of police, can deem dangerous, but I have to post it to the owner first. If it's running at large, we have to issue a warning. We can't just seize the dog. And and to be potentially dangerous, there has to be that act of aggression. Dangerous dog means that you've been inflicted with serious injury. You've been hospitalized, you've been disfigured or something to that effect. The biggest change in here is that animals running at large. That could be deemed nuisance and and we define that is that we have before had to give that warning. And then again, if if there was, if I deemed it dangerous, potentially dangerous, I had to physically. Serve notice to that owner telling them that they had to, they had to turn in the dog in a set number of days. For Alamance County. Or Burlington Animal Services to deem that dog dangerous, then they get a hearing. And all that stuff kind of starts taking place, although legality that's that's put out in state statute. And all that stuff kind of starts taking place, all the legality that's, that's put out in state statute. Um, this allows us to, if we get someone calling saying, hey, this dog is running at large, he's growled at us. Um, he's a pro- a protestant and a posture that seems vicious. We can be proactive. We don't have to warn anybody. If the dog is out there, we can take our little catch pole, catch him up, take him, do all the investigation that needs to be done while that dog is safely secured at the, as an impound. Now, when we do impound it, then I'll give notice saying, hey, th- this is why we took your dog. Uh, the hearing process starts much quicker than having to go through the steps of giving the warning, giving the notice. Um, and in that time, as we're learning this, you know, that second person did get bit. Um, and this just gives us the ability to be a little bit more proactive. Again, it doesn't help us with uncooperative pet owners. And that's why I said it, it may not have had a, a huge impact on the end result of this last case because if we can't get to the dog, we can't kick a door in and go take it. Um, if we don't know what's in there, um, that said dog, I mean, they, they had three different dogs, so we have to have more evidence to enter a home. But it gives us a little bit more advantage to, to be proactive on that front end and not maybe I would say uh, it's a little bit.
During the instance of where the first bite happened, you'd be able to then serve the papers right then?
We could have done it before the first bite. As, it, cause as information came, there, you know, we got calls about this dog running, but it wasn't doing anything and we had to give warning first. Um, they're like, well, it's approaching aggressively. Well, per our statute, okay, we can warn them. And then we can cite them for having a dog running at large, but it, it would have given us more ability to be proactive before that first bite even happened.
Other question, um, as you know, there's an individual close to my house that a lot of my neighbors are calling me about. The dog has an invisible fence, but the dog is left out all the time and that's not considered tethering. But I mean, they, they leave for days at a time and the dog is just outside in the you know, the electric fence and it's barking and it wants to go in because it was like freezing rain one time. And so how, is this addressed at all in the ordinance?
That would be a nuisance, the barking, the howling, um, even though it's contained in its yard, uh, it is unsupervised. There could be a neglect piece to that, and I would say merits an investigation and a nuisance can be a site of offense that's issued, that, that is covered in this ordinance as it stands before you.
Yeah, cause there was a whole section in there about neglect as well and.
Yeah. Yes, it's been, yeah, I get lots of calls on those weekends.
We'd be happy. I, I haven't received any, so.
I know, I just think.
You're, you're far more approachable, so um, if you want to pass that on to us, we'd be happy to investigate that and see what we can do on that.
So, I'm just knowing that there's at least one change that needs to be made. Are you proposing that you bring us back?
Yes, I will do the new language and bring that back at another session.
And with that, should we then also postpone removing chapter thirteen since that would remove all of our animal ordinance without a new chapter six in place?
Well, this will still be in place, right? The nuisance is still in place. We can, we can make it clean and do it all at one time. If that makes more sense, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. That would be a better idea to make the change all at once.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that? To delay the vote on both items?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can forward this to the summer twelfth meeting. You know, postpone action until December twelfth.
Okay, do we have a motion to postpone action on letter A and letter C under old business until December twelfth?
I'll make that motion postponed.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
How many chickens can we have?
Depends on how many steak or anything you're gonna share.
All right.
And build the subdivision behind us.
Our big ticket item, we have our land management ordinance and zoning.
Hmm, so, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I do not have a presentation for you tonight. Um, I really don't have anything. At your desk is two possible motions. I have made all of the requested changes to the LMO that was included in your packet um, and updated the spreadsheet showing where all the changes were made. I would ask because one is a text amendment and one is a rezoning that they be voted on separately. Um, and if you have any questions of me at this time, I would be happy to answer them. I would like to take just a moment to um, thank everyone that has been a part of this process. It's been a four or five-year process. I know it long predated me. Um, but to Pam and Kirk and Paul, our consultants who got us here, um, the committee members, all the the hours spent reviewing this, um, everyone involved in that process, to the staff folks who reread it. Um, and lastly, I would just like to thank my planner Jenna, who's been absolutely godsend in helping me update all of these chapters and all of this weird formatting in here that I look forward to. Um, this is Jenna's last week with the town. She will be leaving us. Um, and I wish her well, but she has been super helpful in this LMO and hopefully everything you had before you looks correct and all of the changes were made. Um, if not, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Lori?
I, I, I want to reiterate what you just said. There are a lot of sweat and tears and a lot of hours put into this and some of those folks who participated are here tonight and I appreciate their faithfulness to stick with this project. Got, got off on a great start and got kind of sidetracked, but you know, to the credit of Pam and Kurt and their assistance from them, we were able to get this back on track. I, I want to thank everyone's participation in this and um, I think we're gonna, we're gonna find this is gonna help us to move forward. Uh, we're gonna have better development, better smart growth. That's one of the things we've talked about as a, as a need, so. Do those to you.
I just want to reiterate that, but uh, the other part of it for me is, is that, you know, I think you've made it very clear that sometimes these documents are never completely perfect and if there is a chance, we don't just throw everything out waiting, make it perfect, we go ahead and pass it because it's definitely a large improvement over what we have now. And uh, and with that said, if there is, if we start, as we live into it, we start to see there's some issues, we can make those changes.
Absolutely. I've even already got the list started and it hasn't been adopted. Very minor, very, very minor, but I'm already seeing small, very small changes, but yes, I will bring you a grouping at one time when we get to that point.
I think the illustrations were really helpful.
Yes, and thank you Benchmark for the illustrations.
Kind of what it looks like, not to just like think about it and try to conceptualize it, but to see it in the illustrations.
It absolutely was, and I failed to thank them. Benchmark did the downtown master plan and we contacted them to do the illustrations in here and absolutely, I think it can be a lot of questions having the visual graphics for you to see.
I'd like to thank everybody for all the work on this. I wasn't a part of that part of it, but I heard the backend and just hearing the backend, that's a lot of work, so. It seems to be very detailed and you know, as Randy said, we can always, if there's a major change, but I think pretty much covered it. So, great job. Man, I'm ready to make a, a motion.
What would you like to make in that motion?
I would like to approve that the uh, that the proposal, the proposed text amendment includes a new land management ordinance that is consistent with the twenty forty envision Elon comprehensive plan. And the future planning goals and objectives of the town of Elon. Furthermore, the action is reasonable and in the public interest because it supports several goals outlined in the twenty forty envision Elon comprehensive plan, including having a zoning ordinance that aligns with the comprehensive.
I have a motion to approve the text amendment. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, do we have a motion regarding the rezoning?
No one else wants to read? I'll, I'll do it again, but. Open someone else into it. Okay, well, yes, I have another motion. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the twenty forty envision Elon comprehensive plan and has an acceptable level of impact on both the immediate area and the community as a whole. Furthermore, the action is reasonable and in the public interest because the uses allowed in the proposed zoning districts are similar to what is currently allowed under the existing land development ordinance.
Do you have a motion for the rezoning request? Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In carries.
Thank you. That's exciting. We will have it on the website as soon as possible.
When does that go into effect?
Uh, because so we will have it on the website.
Thank you all for your hard work.
I think we have some questions about this next item. I think what we thought we were getting is not what we actually got. Right, in the says, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Room to spread out.
That's traffic.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's all about parking and traffic. And I was set, and I'm like, this is not.
The wrong one got attached. I'm sorry, that was my error. There is an ordinance that, that pertains to the construction. I attached the wrong one wrongly.
So, we should just table it until we get the right one?
That's totally up to you. If you want to see the correct one in front of you. You all have already heard the argument on or the discussion on the rules of construction. And basically the ordinance just puts, sets it in place and we're able to upload it to municipal. So that's, that's what that.
Is this the last step in that process?
So, I, I guess I was confused. I, I was asking earlier when I was up here, um, before the meeting started. So this was something that was done in two thousand eighteen, that was approved in August of twenty eighteen. Um, and then it says that there is a recommendation by the dev committee on February tenth.
We should show you the timeline and everything took place.
Yeah, what should have been attached are what we've already discussed. Did we, since it's a change to the ordinance, did we have to have a public hearing?
I went back and researched that and I went to Rick and Lee and know as well that unless general statutes require you to have a public hearing on a particular item, just making a code change does not require public hearing.
Now, the text under section one point five, who the construction is what the dev committee brought. The masculine form is gonna encompass.
Yeah. Uh, and, and going back to the medicine, listening to what um, Mayor Sharp stated was you all elected option number two, which includes corporation, uh corporations and uh, what was it, institutions?
Well, so that's the only change we're making then.
Yeah, that, that was a change. But I'm, I'm happy to be submitted to you for your December twelfth meeting. I'll be here as a guest, cause I've got Seymour retired.
I think, just to make sure that we know what we're voting on as the final, I think we should postpone number twelve.
I don't think it's gonna, and I could prob, be a problem if we wait.
And I don't, you know, I don't think it's gonna be controversial or anything either. I think it's just, I think we need to.
Have the documentation.
Yeah, can we?
We didn't have any consent agenda this time, is that correct?
That is correct. I changed that.
Was everybody okay with that?
All right, we will move out to the December twelfth agenda. Moving on to new business, downtown plaza rental procedures and fee schedule.
I hate they're not interested in sticking around. So I am here tonight to talk about our downtown plaza rental uh, component for public use. Uh, we Rich and I discussed that we probably would need some sort of policy because we, we might have some interest and we already have our first request. So I just wanted to share that happens to be a downtown business. I want to make sure that they are, they do have an opportunity to utilize the plaza. Um, it's actually Pandora's and they're doing their anniversary. Or twelve. So that's our first request. I'm not saying we're not gonna get others, but that kind of prompted us to kind of speed this along a little bit. So, um, you have attached in your packet, um, a rental, a proposed rental policy agreement uh, for the plaza. You know, as you know, this is kind of a unique venue. It's not, um, you know, a park or a picnic structure. It's not, it's kind of a different type of thing. And so I really felt that this should, um, you know, mostly be used for an outdoor space, but that we would have limited public use, maybe once a month was, was my suggestion. As a part of this process, I really felt that we should still go through the special event per- permit process, which you all are familiar with. That would lead all the applications, you know, to go to all the department heads. We would all review it, see what it is, what's required of it. Um, if we have any additional staff, those types of processes. And in addition, they would fill out this plaza application that they wouldn't have a, a separate fee structure attached to it. Um, and, and one of the components I felt important was that it has to be a public event because I don't really see a way that you could block that off and, and have it a private event in such a public setting. So when I say public event, and that anybody in the public can come to, like it's a craft show or it's a a fundraiser of some sort, or in this case Pandora's wants to do a celebration, and that anybody could come. It's not, you know, just quarantine to, to a certain group of people. So, uh, the plaza uh, fee structure is attached to, to your packet. There is one additional change that Lori asked me to add because she needed an addition on page two at the very, very bottom. Um, I highlighted in red, um, she wanted to include the cost of the legal ad would go to the applicant rather than town of Elon paying that. I think she well exceeded her her budget this year as ads are quite costly and so she had that change. And then all of my fees for, for the plaza are located on page eleven in your packet. And if you notice in that component, I did put a resident and non-resident uh, rate in there. Um, I, I just, I feel strongly, we should always take care of our residents first and give them some sort of a discount uh, for using facilities within their town. Um, and that also would in the give our, our businesses an opportunity to get um, the resident rate as a business in Elon. So I'm requesting for you to, well, for one thing, to open it up for discussion. I know, um, Randy and I did have a discussion earlier today, so he has a point to bring up, but have you all review that, the concept, um, if you have some questions or, you know, some, have some conversation on how you feel about what was presented to you and hopefully come up with some sign of uh, sort of proposal that's agreeable to everybody to, to put this into place for us.
We want to start with something really nitpicky.
Okay.
All of the Ts were question marks.
Yep, T I, anywhere there's a T I.
What happened?
I don't know, the document shows.
It must be something in a.
Something in translation, right?
No, must, I don't, is it something?
Sometimes when you convert from one version of words.
Granicus, isn't that weird?
I'm looking at your document and it has it in the word after.
Oh, weird.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure. Yeah, it was really interesting. We were all, we were seeing it.
Oh, yeah.
Thought maybe it goes like a draft.
No, that's so odd.
Wanted to get the copy there or something.
Everywhere.
Sure the council's paying attention to its.
Yeah, good for you. That can certainly be fixed.
So Randy, you, you had some.
Yes, I have a, definitely have a concern. Um, uh, this is private use of the public plaza. Um, as, as, as we are, that is the green space, and again, I'm speaking both as a council person, but also. Both as a council person, but also as a property owner, not an owner, but a steward of the property. Um, or the church, um, we have, we have tried to be good partners as best we can. And, uh, and as public gatherings go, we have students that come over and use the green space. We have other people come over and. Use it and we've, we've tried our best to 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 work with that, to try to be hospitable. But when it's now come to private usage. Uh, you're actually paying rental on the plaza, not on the green space. And so they're easier, there's going to have to be one of two things that are going to have to happen. There's going to have to be. A secondary process by which people would rent the green space. And I'm not crazy about that because that's not what we're in the business for. Or making sure that it's clear to people that the green space is not available. Um, so this is a concern that I have.
And how would we do that if it's a public event?
It's not a, they're all private events, even though they're open to the public. Well, you know, even like when the restaurant. Would were to do something like that, there if they were using our green space, they should be asking us permission to do that.
I think if it goes through a rental process, it's almost easier to control that in that. We can add wordage to this, says you, your rental is inside the plaza only. You can utilize the tables there, but nothing actually happens. They're not allowed to use the green space for the event. And also none of the number of people, um, I did put in there that we have exceeding capacity of forty to fifty. But I didn't put that the maximum capacity of the rental. Could potentially be fifty or whatever it is we determine it should be.
And that's where I had a question because. How how do you regulate? This is open to the public indoors event.
Right, you can't.
Be far more than fifty people.
You can't regulate.
And the green space is part of our social district. Um, I'm I'm indifferent in general with, um, renting it out. I understand the initial thought of it. Um, and having people come. But I would like them to talk to the town because I mean, I can see Pandora's. Uh, events and we're we're singling out that because that's the only one that's coming.
Right.
It's like, hey, I want to do this. They pull, they pull a special use permit.
Right.
Um, and have a special event. And that's like it's partnership with the town. And then the green space, we could use like the music to dine to because it's just a. It's not a vice painter rental fee. It's the public plaza to.
I mean, the other option is to just you do the special event permit process like we do now. And we pick and choose them individually. It's, they won't be. You won't be making any money. And I don't think we're that. That's not really the purpose of this per se. Although I did put a fee structure that's more than fifty dollars per event. But if you stay with just a special event permit, it doesn't preclude, say Pandora's from doing that. I don't know. That's just, and Rich's brain is churning over there.
Yeah, I mean, I I I again, it's just, we've we've allowed, you know, kind of a partnership.
It's different when it's.
Trying to be open to the community and and again, that's, that's okay. When people are actually paying for an event. They may feel like they have a right to do something that's different than if they're either is part of the partnership or something like that.
Well, and the other thing is we are not going to be staffing it, you know, like you do some facilities. Bishop Mount Park, they have part-time staff that works those and enforces that. I don't have the ability to do that with with the staffing that I have.
So.
So.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what what could happen. Obviously, if thirty people say, we want to go use the plaza today. It's our group. We go there and use it. Um, they have a right to do that. Um, they don't have a permit. What they expect to. You know, they can stay there two hours, they can stay there seven hours. Whose responsibility would it be? Like you said. I walk with Bishop Mount Park. I see people using pavilion, using tables. I don't know if they've paid for for a birthday party for their kids. Probably they did. Who's and obviously there's people out there during the week. Maybe weekends they're out there just to make sure the doors are locked. But I don't know that you want to try to, how do you police that? How do you keep people from? Using a public space just for that? And I I understand why you're you're doing this. I mean, we've got to be mindful. How do you allow people to use the space? But. Like you said, the church has been most generous, but during the week, people go out there in the green space. They sit out there and.
Right.
Eat and dine or whatever on their own.
And are are you against some of a group deciding, hey, we want to go down there taking their chances? Oh, the tables are available. We want to gather. Are you, you know, if you, are you opposed to that idea?
Well, I mean, I think gathering is different than a special use.
It is.
Things. I mean, it's one thing if like we, a busker goes downtown or a band tries to set up, right? I mean. We're going to get calls and that's something we can talk about.
Well, right now, we we have, uh, we will get approached and people will use our 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 yard.
Oh, yeah.
Um, C N R. He does it a lot, you know, when there's, when there's a student event, they they will rent and they'll put a little pad up and they'll sell some of their stuff. There was a time when we were doing some bookstore stuff. And boy, uh, poor Earl Daniel about had a stroke, um, because he didn't want it to compete with. The bookstore, the official bookstore. So and we said, no problem. We just, we won't rent that. So I mean, it's so it's not like we don't. And that's not ruling out the idea that we put if that way we maybe would make some money to mitigate, you know, having to keep grass planted and stuff like that. But, uh, that's what I was looking at. I was like, it just, it just didn't sound right. It didn't sound. That that a group could have a private use, even though it's in a public setting, but a private use and then maybe have expectations. That's what I was really looking.
It's a good point. It's a, it's a unique situation.
Yeah.
And I'm going to get requests. I don't know how, you know, how we, which direction we go.
I mean, and maybe the first question is. Do we want to allow? Private groups to take over the plaza for for a private event, even if it's open to the public? Or. Maybe that leave that as the first question.
What what I have was, we have specific times for the social district. And why would we not have specific times? For example, if somebody wanted to rent it at. Sunday morning at ten o'clock. And they're competing with his congregation who needs to park there and access there. Maybe that's not being very considerate. To them. So that's, I guess that's my concern is, you know, what animal would it be?
We we also. We could leave it for town events and very special. Um, situations. I mean, what if the university wanted to do something in partnership with us? The church, we already partner and do events. And if that's the way.
Examples that you put in there that could be rented, like a chili cook-off. Why wouldn't the town want to be involved in a chili town committee?
Right.
Um, they, one of our businesses, like Pandora's, like.
Right. My big thing is to not preclude that our downtown businesses from being able to utilize it for special occasions and.
Well, they're right next to it. They'll probably utilizing it quite a bit. I would imagine they're going to give a lot of their customers going to be out there.
Well, and then part of the, especially Pandora's, more more than any without having a public restaurant. If they want to do something. We for their twelfth, you know, at least we, I I feel like we can do as a town is. If we have to staff it, staff that a bit because we're going to have all the people go into their bathroom.
That is an issue. There are no public bathrooms. So, you know, to me, it is first and foremost, a public gathering and dining space. But now that it's so beautiful and I think it has turned out really well, we're going to get these these requests and. I mean, if it's, we don't rent it for public use, it's only for special events, then, you know, we go that route, but. I mean, I I don't have buy in one way or the other. I don't want to see it to where. It's rented every single weekend. And every time somebody wants just to come hang out and. Put the computer up and get food at different restaurants. Oh, we can't sit there. We can't sit there. We can't sit there.
Yeah.
I don't want to see.
I know personally, if I've been to a public park. Come there not knowing that the space has been rented.
Right.
It's a big disappointment. You think this is a public space? Someone had the ability to take that away from me as a taxpayer. They go use. That's a concern, I guess I have.
I just think it's an opportunity that, you know, this is. A member of the downtown organization, is there not a way to just partner as the downtown organization and the town of Elon to celebrate? This occasion and not have a formal rental. Policy.
And I'm sure they're going to foot the bill.
Yes, they've already filled out a special event, uh, application, fifty dollar application. They've already done that and I don't know for insurance yet. She's just kind of waiting to see what I said. Well, we we're trying to figure out what to do with this plaza.
But then, yeah.
Fine with that too.
And that's what I'm going to get back to is what is her expectation of having that special event? That she has exclusive use of the of the plaza and.
Well, just.
Why does she need it to begin with?
She wants the van to be in the plaza itself, not up on her patio, actually in the plaza using our power.
So she would use the special event for that.
Right, you were correct.
Well, that goes back to the insurance and the green space. So the insurance is this. Is it just the plaza piece that the insurance is covering? Because it's under the social district, so they don't need to pull a liquor permit for it. And then we we know without a shadow of a doubt, people are going to be on the green space. It just, I mean, it's just going to happen, and especially if it's public. So how does that ensure?
You know, and I'll just say specifically Pandora's doesn't break my heart. I mean, and I don't think the church would either because they've been partners with us and other things in the past. I mean, it's not a problem. Uh, that it wasn't that particular event. It was the idea. Of having private usage.
Well, maybe it's working with our partners and we're okay and and that that I would come to you and say. By the way, they would like to have this, you know, it's potential they could flow over onto the grass and we work as what we are partners.
Yeah. Are they responsible for cleanup? Are they responsible for making sure there's extra waste?
We've tried to put it here. Yeah, but even in there, it didn't really. Specify enough for the cleanup. They're they're responsible to clean up. There's trash cans that are around.
Yeah.
Is that they're responsible for cleanup? Does that mean they have to empty the town's trash cans and take?
No, we have trash service five days a week, so. Even when we have events, only day they don't pick up. Downtown.
Right. You want to add something, Rich?
Why? A restaurant downtown wants to put a band on the plaza. Somehow we would need to authorize that. Whether it's this way. You know, if you say, well, okay, if they get a special event permit. That's fine. You folks aren't involved in any of that. Is. I recognize your need. That, oh, well, that's. That's a private public event rather than a public, public event. They have the right to be sitting on on the lawn at the church. Maybe we figure out a way to demarcate where the edge of the plaza is and say. You know, you you can't go beyond there, although it's still part of the social district. So you could go. That, I mean, that that's, that's, that's a point of confusion. I'm not sure how to address.
Right. I think I think Monty also named it though is that. What if the church decides it's having an event out there? And you've and you've now rented the space and we're having our event, you're having your event.
And we're not coordinating together.
And we're not coordinating. Uh, I mean, that and and it doesn't preclude you to have to coordinate with us. That's the thing. So.
Coordination, I think, is a separate issue. We could certainly address. It's. If it's, if it's something that we typically do and somebody else is doing it. Is that a big problem? Versus. You mentioned a craft fair. So a group wants to use the plaza to set up a craft show and they take up all the dining space. During lunch hour. Or at dinnertime. Somehow we need to have some way to either authorize it. Control it that way or. Prohibit it. So that. You know, so something doesn't just show up and say, hey, let's take up all these tables and, you know, sell our candles.
So they won't be moving the tables, right? Who's going to move the tables if things need need to happen?
That then, well, on our special vet permit, which is part would be part of this process, if anything, that has to be done, then they have to pay for our staff to do those things.
Okay, well, that's, I'm I'm speaking as a council person.
I'm overhearing, just if I can summarize that you all.
Sale stuff now?
What's that?
Like, can somebody just go sell their candles on the side of the street?
Yeah, they have to get.
They have to have a.
So we we could, we could stop that. But if somebody just wanted to go down there and just to set up their art to give away or to look.
It's not considered a bigger part of the sidewalk then?
No, well, you know, or you have a dance troupe that goes down there wants to perform.
I'm just, I'm envisioning.
This is what a great place we could set up and we could spend three hours dancing here. Let's, you know, push all the tables out of the way and.
It will happen just from my own experience in previous jurisdictions, we have to have something in place. And if if it's not this complicated bits. You want to do a public of an event in this space, you have to go through a special event process and then we decide. And some of that might be, ooh, I better call Randy on this because this is sounding larger than I think we can decide without. And that leaves it, every department has seized that.
Okay, and inside the permit, it says about trash and cleanup and removal and all that. That that has to be agreed.
And especially.
And especially.
And it would be nice if you could just call me, but you were actually calling my trustees.
But you're saying.
You know, the trustees of the building, they'd have to come up with.
Two months' notice.
Right.
Two months' notice should be fair, fair amount of time for us to coordinate.
Coordinate doing.
For example, if Randy's got scheduled something on a Saturday or wedding. You you may be opposed to allow it to be used during that time period.
Uh, or if we have a C L C event that's going to fill the parking lot.
What's the current special use permit?
Special event permit.
Special event.
Two months.
It's two months, just or not just specifically for this.
And it's fifty dollars plus the cost of town services.
Exactly. To be honest, I think anything in the plaza, I would probably just come to you as as an automatic.
We're almost going to have to, yeah, because I'm just thinking now there's a parking alternate. There's a parking situation now.
Well, I just think it should be limited.
I agree.
I don't think it should be a private event space. I think it should be open for people to come and sit and. You know, if if they want to have a little person, two-person meeting or like a family of ten wants to gather and eat pizza or have coffee. I think it should be fluid and open and not like.
Like you would at the park facility.
Yeah.
I agree.
So in this case with Pandora's, they have filled out the special event permit. I can then go to Randy and say, listen, this is what they're proposing, get an idea of. How many people she's thinking and handle it that way. It goes to all the department heads.
I just think it has to be very. Clear, this is not a private event. And I I think in this case, you've already discussed that, but it's not a private event.
So if people were to.
To whomever.
Right.
You know, somebody can go and get a drink at Oak House, coffee or otherwise and sit down and sit. You know, I I. That's the way that I see it. I see it as a public space.
So if somebody were to call to inquire and say, I want to hold my kid for a party, can I reserve four tables? The answer is definitely, you know.
What work, I would say there's shelters available at the park or they can contact Pandora's about reserving four tables.
Or it's, you know, come at your own, Rich, you're welcome to to use the facility and.
Absolutely.
Order your pizzas and.
Vines that it's slate bar can get a snack bar. So somebody wants a table.
With bathrooms too.
With bathroom facilities.
That's a big factor.
You know, that and that would be unless my sworn to have something down, you know.
Not ideal, but I think we're in consensus then. We're trying to envision. What could happen here? And so we might be revisiting this at a couple other times. I mean, the truth is, is that you're absolutely right. It's a beautiful. Setting and I think it's when it's all said and done, um, you're talking about doing dancing though on that seal once it's painted. Yeah, I was gonna have to be something we're going to have to figure out too.
I'm seeing the soft shoe, Randy.
For the record, I've never been a part of any dance entity that just shows up randomly like that. They always.
But but if, but if they wanted to use it. That precludes anybody else from using.
Yeah.
See, that's the problem.
So, you know, if you, if you don't allow people to move the tables. And and, you know, then they're, then they're going to find some other venue. So.
So I'm hearing rentals.
Stick with a special event process.
We're sticking to the special event process. And kind of working there and that with, we have strong coordination.
And yes.
And special events kick in when they're doing music. Um, what are some of the other things that trigger special events?
Um, the. The the amplification.
Right. Mass gathers. Anything that would, uh.
I have it.
For a gather.
Yeah.
So so when, obviously, if the university wanted to use that property, obviously, they made a sizable investment in that property. Um, like for a parents weekend or something like that, would we allow? Special venues for that?
Four hundred dollar rental fee.
I mean, I feel like the university has plenty of space that they can host an event.
Yeah.
But if we wanted to dress.
I mean, and then they have, um, Phoenix Friday night in Burlington, not Elon, so.
I would love to see some Elon events in our downtown. I think it will. And again, that goes back to they are. So that's the other.
Partner.
They're a partner of special events.
What if a class, you know, envisioning a class coming over there and doing something? What I'm just saying, they might not ask for a special. They might just come over and.
We're sort of atomic kaleoscope.
Should we?
Atomic kaleoscope.
Flower box, they'd be launched there. About the kale scope.
They're going in under the tents anyway. They're going in under the tents anyway.
It's not, it's not there.
No, it's not, it's, it's on, it's on. Property, but it's on. It's on the right way.
So I, I agree with the mayor in the sense that I really think this was made. To be a public area for folks to come, and I do appreciate, you know, all the thought that went into. Trying to make sure that it was accessible for these type of events, and I certainly wanna support our downtown folks, but I think probably. That's route to go is what everybody's.
I wasn't completely, uh, completely sold on this idea either, it just was to present the the option of it. Cuz I kinda had that little feeling too, but what this is a public space, but how do we, I know these requests are gonna come, and if they.
It's not even done yet, you have people asking for it.
Right, so we have to have something in place, and if are in places. You can follow the special set process, it's. A public s- space for anybody to come, you're welcome to sit there, but we don't move tables and that type of thing, that's, that is a policy.
When is Pandora's gonna do theirs?
January, I don't write the date.
January.
Yes. Yeah, it's gonna be cold.
You know, I could see something, how we do those music, uh, to where, you know, they just, hey, we would like to advertise our twelfth anniversary, they. Pay for the band that you pay.
Right.
So the town doesn't put the the bill on the band. And just moves in the same direction as it always.
Right.
Yeah, I'm with it, I I think this is the public space, this isn't a pavilion, this isn't a. Even the, like downtown Burlington rents out the depot.
Yeah.
But it's private. And tell people not to come in.
The nature of where it is and how it's.
Could we use that space during the farmer's market?
Yes.
Right, so we could, it wouldn't be a. This event, we, it's adjacent. Farmers market, yeah. We, we could obviously use that space, we would be consistently. Use it for the same purpose and is a public. Yes, public space. It's a, a vendor could set up for you.
Or even the quilt show, I know we talked about our committee. They're willing to put up quilts on this new.
Sound partner.
Right, they they don't need to pay fifty, but I mean, I I don't know. I understand it hasn't been put up yet, we need to figure out what's happening.
Just see how. Kind of live into, and I, and my caveat is, is if if we start to see at the very beginning, there's problems arising. And that you, you have, kind of like the chief had, you know, there's problems getting the thing you done, you wanna get done. Please come to us and let's talk about, yeah, let's, let's deal with it.
Well, we are gonna have the power locked, because if that were open. You might drive down and see some random band set up and people having a great old time, because during graduation, there's all kinds of events going on that. There weren't permits for, and oh my gosh, there's a ten up, and you know, people, you know, they don't realize, or they just do their thing.
Well, there's a lot of people that are standing on the sidewalk, yelling or doing things without amplification, can they do that on the? On the plaza, that was my question, that that's.
Still public property.
Is it considered a big giant wide part of the sidewalk then?
No, but it's public property still.
Yes, so, and they, they could do whatever they want on it.
I think that's really important.
I, I would, I'll verify that with our attorney.
Okay, I, that would, I think that would be helpful.
We have. I I recall, we were looking, uh, you know, set up the Christmas tree and the menorah. It was, all right, we have, you know, by doing that, we designate space as. Well, a s- a place for public speech. So if somebody were standing on the sidewalk, we have no, we don't have any rules against it.
Right.
If they're on the plaza. I'll verify, but I I I'm doubtful that we'd have a lot of leaving, but throw somebody out because they're saying something that. You know, we don't like.
And for the record, I would love to do a big block party with the university and the town of Elon downtown, I think that would be fabulous. That's on record.
All right, so it sounds like, just to redirect, cuz I think we could water this all night long.
Well, and that's what we're doing.
Is, um, we're gonna go to the special event permit for now, let's test it out, let's see how it goes. However, there is another change in this fee schedule that I believe we want to get through tonight, and that is on page two. With the street right-of-way abandonment, um, to add the cost of legal advertisement to the fee schedule. So, um, I would like to entertain a motion that we make. Um, that change only to our. Um, town fee schedule for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four at this time. Um, and without the other items that were in addition. That were adding on the downtown plaza fees. The only change that we would be making to that fee schedule. Is at the bottom of page two, your street right-of-way abandonment and cost of legal advertisement, do I have a motion?
What is that fee?
It's a seven hundred dollar fee and the cost of legal advertisement, because.
What is the cost of legal advertising?
Want to give you an example, I had to run the resolution, I actually had to print the resolution that was signed by the mayor. For four consecutive weeks, and that cost me six hundred, sixteen hundred dollars, my budget for the year was fifteen hundred. Talk about the LMO advertisement, I had to.
You're gonna get the hundred dollars back?
So what I'm proposing is they still pay the seven hundred dollar for the staff review and the T R C review, but. The applicant has to pick up the cost or whatever the legal ad is. They are getting property out of it.
Obviously, we have to spend time doing that, I mean, if it's a hundred dollars, we charge a hundred and twenty dollars. I don't know what it costs to do that, but, I mean, if we're just passing on the cost, we're hurting the. The effort to do that. Well, the the so, the application fee of seven hundred covers staff time. So that would be cover preparing the resolution and everything like that, send it to the newspaper, paying for that, for the advertising that. Uh, was the.
After advertising one publication.
Four consecutive weeks, four weeks prior to the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to consideration and discussing of naming policy.
You have, uh, as a community, we have, we have named things in the past. Uh, without any. Guidelines or. Parameters or suggestions as to why or any protocols. Uh, it's kind of been done at the mayor's. Question of the, the, whatever. Whatever drove that decision. Um, talking with Mayor Sharp, we thought that it was important that if we're gonna. Do that, uh, that in the future, that there be some reasonable policy in place that would would provide guidance. So you've got the draft in front of you, uh, that, uh, was. Cobble together from three or four different communities, uh, and their language. And as you can see, we, we, you know, just find what the purpose is. Let it lay the framework for how we're gonna do this. And what the goals are. And, uh, you know, what it is that we're gonna use to make those decisions. Naming it, uh, you know, to like, Community Plaza, Centennial Hall. Bob Smith Plaza, Bob Smith Hall, making those decisions as to. What, what, what's appropriate? What, what triggers those criteria for, uh, someone to be eligible to have something named in their honor? What types of things will, will be named? Uh, and perhaps even as important, what types of things will not name? We won't have under this, we wouldn't have Bob Smith Station Eight. Remain Station Eight. There may be Bob Smith Fitness Room. Within Station Eight. So that, so features of the town that would be eligible. Parks, playgrounds, uh, ancillary buildings, uh, other facilities like that. Uh, would not include things such as the town hall, would not include departmental buildings. Um, those would remain. You know, the name of the department, if you will.
Question really quick. Morgan Place. Got named by the town?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure it's kind of like our place like Hampton or one of those.
And we're not proposing to change anything, it's already been done.
And, well, I was looking, that's, I was looking carefully at that, because there was some stuff in here about renaming and, but it didn't look like you made it that easy, so that was good, I want. Make sure that there would be no.
And we did confirm that everything that is currently named for a person already does meet this criteria as well, so. That was another reason why we went with the recommendations that we did is that.
Mark, would you like to amend it to go down to sixteen? Not gonna do that.
Well, you know, so just a little bit additional background is that it is. It has really always just been the, the mayor wanted to name something essentially, and I said to Rich, I said. I've on, I've been on this council for six years, in my opinion, there shouldn't be anything named after me. You know, like, it's six years is nothing, you know, and. But if we went by the current policy, hey, I'm the mayor, we're gonna name it after me, right, like, that's not. I don't think that that should be the case, I think that there should be a policy in place and. Probably what, a year ago, the fire department reached out to me? They reached out to you, and then it came to me and they're like. Um, hey, we wanna name this room after this person, and I'm like, well, that needs to go to council, well, they. They had already done it, and so it kind of brought this all up, like. What's the policy? And I think that there just needed to be something in place that made sense, based off of what we already have in place. You're right. We wouldn't be looking to rename things unless there was some.
So if somebody wanted to donate a million dollars. Ladder truck. Would we allow them any rights?
Under this, we wouldn't, because.
The ladder truck is not considered.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but it's an asset. It's a twenty-year asset or longer.
No, because. It would be ladder eight.
It would still, it's, it's been a significant financial contributor to the town.
Then we could name something after him other than the ladder truck.
Yes. Well, I I will say, when, uh, Alva retired.
His truck.
It's still engineered, st- engineered. Dedicated a window to him, if you will, or, I mean, the decal was put on the truck, but that's still engineered. Yeah, man, I'll cover after them, I'll show them.
So, I mean, I guess technically, if, if someone made a fifty-one percent financial contribution. To said ladder truck, then. We would certainly put a little marker on that ladder truck on the paint for them.
That's what I was thinking. Elon University. Fighting Phoenix, fighting fires.
Oh, I like it.
We like ladder.
Such a ring.
So I agree, we need, um. Swords or something to. I I would like to add a, an E instead of having A through D. Um, an E is, I think, also could be, um, somebody that has added significant community involvement. Even not with the town, and I, I, an example that I have just right offhand, so not like a volunteer with the town. Um, I don't know if y'all know Omega Wilson and his wife, um, out of, uh. They have, they worked on the last ever revitalization, like, they just took that under their wing and they just. So I guess it's kind of in partnership with the town, but for over twenty years, right, they have just contributed to that community and just. Oh, you know, give people rides and just make West End, you know, revitalize the, the West End area. And that is somebody who has contributed to the community, they didn't volunteer. You know, they weren't working the, the Christmas parades or the, the lightings of the tree, they weren't an official, and they weren't somebody who worked with the town. And I just, I don't know. Yes, it's somebody I don't, I might not know what they could do. They have, and again, I think it should be a council, um. I think there needs to be some.
How would you word it?
Um, so I looked up one and I meant to email it to myself, it was, I saw it from a director towns. But it was a significant community involvement or contribution. Um, and I think it has to be sold that way, I don't think it can just be anybody. And I kind of, you know, I I don't think it should be necessarily a famous person, when we go into Gibsonville, right, you see home of Tory Holt. Uh, something like, but that's not named after, uh, somebody, but I don't, I don't know, I just, I feel. I can go with this, if it can be somebody come to us and. You know, amend it something. I just imagine that person who comes to Elon every day and just. Walks the street and picks up all the trash, and that person has done that for thirty years. Right, you know, I mean, it's just something there, and then it's like, man, he, he doesn't get it, kind of the town mascot person. Hasn't really volunteered with us, hasn't really worked with us, I just would hate to. Exclude people in that, that regard.
Why don't we just change has served as a volunteer? With the town or within the town?
Or has contributed significantly to the town?
Yeah.
I think, I think the thing about the, at least the way that I see. The way that I see it is. You know, we're trying to, especially in the diversity, equity and belonging, many, we're trying to reach out to different communities. That we might not necessarily know among ourselves, and so I think this is a great way for us to reach out to other communities and say. Who are some of those families, or who are some of those individuals that have really made a difference? And this would allow them to participate, not saying that that's necessarily going to be. You know. The end-all be-all, but at least it gives a format for which people can say, you know. Someone paid for doing this, as you said, for twenty or thirty years. It would be really great if we named such and such after them, ob- obviously, they would still have to apply like anybody else, but this gives them the opportunity to use.
Well, I don't know about applications.
Okay, well, well, whatever the format. Referral, excuse me. No, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant.
So. I added a letter D just to. Adapt, um, so bumped E down. Has contributed significantly to the town for a period of twenty years or more, so. But how do we do? Do we need to define that? Because like, my definition of contributed significantly would be. Serve in a formal manner, but what, what are you all defining as?
Well, you put, you're also putting. These other ones. I'm just trying to figure out, what if it's some kind of a special thing that we want, that a council may want to do? Someone who's done a sign, made a significant contribution, uh, non-financial contribution. Of time and effort to the town. Twenty years part.
Would that follow under the volunteer? Um, contributions? So I gave a bunch of time and contribution to the town, that'd be a volunteer.
Well, but your, your person, your person didn't. I was just trying to figure out. Was, we're trying to word Smith here.
You're kind of about, you started coming earlier about volunteering with the town. Implies. Formal, somewhat formal arrangement. Does on behalf of the, with or be on behalf of the town. It addresses your issue, somebody who picks up the trash every day for thirty years. That they're not volunteering with us, they're doing it on behalf of us, on their own mission. Like, there's a lot of ways you could give recognition to people. I think of example, university does a great job, they have benches around campus, in honor of or memory of. Past employees. Doesn't have to be naming a building.
Right.
If there's ways you wanna recognize families or people who've. There's multiple ways doing it, spaces, we don't have thirty buildings that, that need naming rights. So, we're gonna be selective. If we have a new building. If that's what we decided to do.
Right.
If somebody was worthy of doing that.
And, and that was my thought process, and I mean, and some municipalities have over twenty years on theirs. Um. And. My thought is that if. If they are getting something named for them. Think that they should have a significant contribution to the town. That affects. The people that are paying for it, the taxpayers. That was the way that I was looking at it, but I agree, I mean, there's other ways to recognize people.
Can we just leave it that broad? Right, that, you know, we have this rubric, but. We can just say that they have contributed significantly to the town, and whoever that person is. There's gonna be an argument made, and then it's up to the current board to. There's gonna be an argument made and then it's up to the current board to deem. If that's significant enough to. And I think the more. On there, the more it's gonna have to check all these boxes. But if it has just significant amount of. This to the town, I don't know. Um, I I just would hate to, like, what if there's this brilliant. Person who figured out how to engineer and conserve. Our water best, what we're doing and we just. Man, they just contributed.
I'll give you a trillion dollars. For naming this building, Elon.
The town's already named after it though.
That's just not the way I look at it. I I tend to agree with you, Mayor. Is it someone who's made a significant contribution, not necessarily financial? But who's who's been an advocate, who's worked hard for the town, made Elon a better place.
I just think, you know, when you look at what we have named for people. Right? You have the hallway is Mike Dula. He was our town manager forever. Um, you have the Ron Klebsik playground. He was sitting on his council for twenty, over twenty years. You have. The front of the building was dedicated to Mayor Tolly. Who's forty years in service. We have Lawrence Slade, which is our longest standing. Olderman at the time, or named after him, you have Beth Schmidt. Town clerk, town manager, mayor, councilperson. More than twenty years of contributions. I just feel like if you're gonna name some, if you're gonna name everything else. Off of people who made such significant contributions to the town, then that should be what your rubric is. Otherwise. If, let's say that there's six other people sitting up here and you make it a broad policy. Up into the day, fifty one students could be sitting up here and if this policy is not well done. It can be any douche mode. Um, four years from now.
We don't like this policy, we're gonna.
That's true.
Let me ask you this, um, you you just, if you just went back to the C that's in there right now. Yeah, I think it's already been mentioned, has served as a volunteer. Slash on behalf. Of the town of, uh, uh, of the town for a period of twenty or more years. I think you've covered it. Then that way leaves the door open for a significant. Something that happened like that family like you're talking about, that couple you're talking. Will include them because then they're not in an official capacity having volunteered or as a volunteer like on one of the committees or something like that.
Your suggestion is to change letter C. Has served as a volunteer with or on behalf of the town for a period of twenty years or more.
And I think that covers.
You kind of, you know, rubric of who's our main street star every year. You know, that doesn't have, that's not a bill happens to be a volunteer this time. You've got it the year before. Granted, you were a council member, um. But it didn't have to be, right? Anybody could have.
Our public works department has been a winner of it.
So so that, that's the type of stuff I'm talking about. If somebody did that. For twenty years. It was on behalf of the town, didn't volunteer specifically for the town, but they wouldn't be. Autumn, I think. Overall, the board's gonna know if we're, this is, we're naming something after. And I don't think everything needs to be named.
Oh, I agree. That's, we added that in here. Not everything needs a name. Because otherwise, everything is gonna, it's gonna be up here every other week. We gotta name this.
I like, I like the document.
Yeah, it has water it down when, when, and that's why I really felt like.
I I don't think the on behalf of waters it down. I think it just, it it includes, it gives us an option.
I can get down with what Randy says, so I like the years involved.
Yeah, I I can live with the years now, now that they've done what you've said.
Going back to Monty's. Um, well, I mean, it doesn't say that we have to, that they give a giant con- financial contribution. Put some in a running.
Yeah, sure does.
Or we could just take it out completely, right? If somebody was super awesome and loved the town, like. What if, you know, Bill?
We could, we can just take that one out, like, that's the one that me personally, I'm least tied to is the financial contribution. I just feel like. To have. Such a recognition of having a facility. Named after you, you should have to give a significant time. Contribution.
I I like it as.
But I don't.
Exceptional one change.
Yes, I'm with it on the behalf, um, I'm down.
I still think that you need to leave that open for the significant, the contribution. Cause you know, someone may do that and then they might. Do it on behalf of a loved one, something that they've lost or something. There's just a lot of reasons why that that name could mean something, so. Maybe some of them mostly wouldn't say, it doesn't matter whether you name it or not.
And honestly, when we put it together, I don't think I was thinking that someone was going to like. Pay for, I don't know, like a whole new park, right? It's more like if someone wanted to maybe put the shelter on top of the basketball court. You know, fifty one percent of that is really feasible for a donation and.
Did we name the court? The slave park is named after Frank Haight. Is it?
That's right. But I don't think it's marked. Is it?
I think it, I think it needs to stay. Yeah, I mean, that may encourage.
Leave the financial contribution.
Yeah, I think, I think it would discourage, yeah.
Have y'all considered what if? Whatever was named. Changes its capacity. And it's no longer there.
Function.
Um, I think that we should. I mean, we have a park, you know.
It's not a contract. The naming of someone. The building were to be destroyed, we had to move, would you feel obligated to have to name a new facility or?
A new hallway.
Office room? I I don't think you would. And we see people change names of buildings all the time, even here in Elon, change names of buildings.
Great names.
There's no contract.
I agree with that.
But I also think there are other ways that we need, and one of the things that Rich and I discussed in drafting this was about sponsorships. And we decided to leave sponsorships out of this and that we should look at sponsorship separately for like. A table at the plaza. If someone wanted to sponsor a table at the plaza, how would that be handled? And we said, we don't wanna do it in a naming policy. We think it should instead be. Something that's established by whatever campaign or whatever.
Well, we we did it out at the Fisher Playground, there's there's benches with people who've made donations.
Yeah.
You know, those kind of things, we want to encourage people, people may be encouraged to do that if the new, we would allow that.
Well, we have, we have bricks out in front of town hall. Down at the corner of Haggard and Williamson.
We we went and built a playground and did the whole thing, made the contribution and was all put up. Then they redid the playground and it's no longer there. Our name is no longer there, but. Time, time comes and goes, so that's, so so to answer your question, I think the changed function. Is gonna happen whether we like it or not, so.
Okay, so.
I I like the.
A, B, C, and D, but C has now changed to has served as a volunteer with or. On behalf of the town. For a period of twenty years more.
And there I would move the acceptance of this document.
Was there anything changed that needs that? I know it's, it gets brought for the council now. Bring up naming.
Nominations for naming shall only come from town council members or town staff. Recommendations for naming by members of the public shall be provided to the town manager or individual members of the town council.
Fine, I mean. Uh, I don't know, are we trying to? Prevent just. People coming to us trying to name everything?
Yeah.
So if that's.
Because not everything needs a name. I think it's more like. You know. For example. When we did Ron Klebsik playground. The mayor at the time said. You know, this is what Ron has done. He made significant contributions to the, that playground being created. Let's dedicate it to him. We did it, you know.
I mean, I would be fine with it coming that the mayor has to bring it and then bring it to the board. That that's one less step than a council member. Bring it up for discussion, if that's part of the.
I think it's, I'd like to leave it if that's.
I'm fine with leaving it.
Yeah, I just think. You know, depending on who the mayor is, what if it's not a friendly situation? So, no, I still. I mean, the thing is, Mary didn't have the vote. I think if somebody wanted to come to Randy or the. The Quinn or Stephanie, say, I like, let's consider naming, this is a criteria that they've done, so they met. It's up to the five voting minutes. Still have to go through the process, still have to go through that process, but if you, if you limited just the mayor and she's, and he or she says. No, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. You lost opportunity.
She wants to, she's the one that wanted a procedure just to off the opening.
I convinced you for doing that. She'll only be mayor for another thirty years.
Okay, so I have a motion?
Yes.
To add amended.
Yeah, we added, I've added it already and then I'll send the update.
We don't need to, we don't need to make an official amendment, do we? Prior to this. We didn't make a motion before we changed the.
So, your motion is to approve with the new virgin, virgin, virgin of letter C. Has served as a volunteer with or on behalf of the town for a period of, so we added. Or on behalf of. All right, so I have a motion.
My motion.
You have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. I will send this out. Okay, next up, um, we have reports, starting with our town manager.
I'm here, but a lot of things are happening. The elephant in the room is the plaza perhaps, uh, we got the utility full with the light posts were delivered installed. Sounds like one might need to be re- reset, uh, what, it wasn't plum, I guess, uh, one is missing this light for some reason. What I've heard via our engineers that, um. That may be why Duke hasn't come out to energize the whole system yet, so. We, we have no power there, we have no lights, um. They had moved the the fencing back, so the sidewalk on Williamson is is now open, or is, so people. Be going around fencing or crossing the street multiple times. The railing on the back of the plaza still needs to be painted. Uh, there's a couple, so, uh, one of the catch bases in Williamson needs some touch up work, so there's still a little bit of work to take place. Not assured that that'll happen this week. Which will interfere perhaps with what's happening this weekend. That takes out the plaza, work is ongoing at. Uh, Haggard and Oak Kelly on the waterline. Uh, installation, uh, they've got another week of work at that intersection before they start moving down. East Haggard. It's coming Tuesday evening. Is the festival of lights on campus and the luminaries downtown. Friday, the first is the tree lighting and Christmas celebration at Beth Schmidt Park. Saturday, the second is hometown Christmas event downtown, uh, lighting the tree downtown. Next week, December seventh is the lighting of the menorah for Hanukkah. And December ninth is a a new event in Elon. And that'll be a celebration of lights, uh, throughout Slay, uh, or Slay Park. And, uh, there will, at the same time, the Baptist church there will be doing a food drive, uh, to help supply the. Food pantry that they operate. And for the non, non-special things on the next week and a half, I expect everybody to head to our website, uh, uh, the calendar of events. Under the community section. And I would like to take a real brief moment. Just to take a couple of comments about Diane's last meeting with us. You, you had made the comment, Mayor, and I had it written as well, that. Um, when I saw the advertisement for town manager Elon and and. Uh, called down here, um, I talked to Diane. When, uh, you folks decided you wanted to interview me. Diane was the one who called me and invited me to come down. Made the arrangements for me to stay down here. Um, when I came down for the interview, she was the one that met me at the building to welcome me to Elon and. Escort me up to, arrived late, mind you, uh, uh, and escorted me up to the room for my interview. And after you hired me and I came to work here, and I spent, I think I spent the first day or two pretty much just with Diane is. Learning the ropes of where things were and, uh, what we had, um. That transition was remarkably easy. And, uh, I. Thank you for making it so easy for me. She obviously is, is the one who, uh, uh, coordinates, has been coordinating. Uh, your meetings, um, making them go smoothly. Uh, in the face of some significant hurdles at times. Uh, COVID comes to mind. And we, you know, when, when we figured out we had to do something different. And kind of looked at Diane and then. Didn't worry about it after that and. You know, she figured out how to get it done, we got it done. And like most of the towns in this country. We had mistakes and we learned from them and we got them fixed, um. Because of her dedication. So. And that took place during the good days and the bad days and times of good health and times of not so good health, um. You know, wh- whether it's, you know, running things from home or what have you, um, so I want to say thank you to Diane. For the warm welcome I got when I came here. Friendship she's given me. The support, the dedication that she shows to her job every day. She puts the interest of our residents first. What's the interest of the council ahead of that and and our employees? Uh, that's what she works toward every day. Whether it's finding that odd answer or answer to an odd question or piece of information that's missing. Your service has been remarkable. Really appreciate it. And, uh. It will be remembered. Thank you very much.
Bethany, oh, please tell me to follow that. Love you Diane, I hope you know that and, um. I I can't follow that, so.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any.
Quinn?
We have our. Arts meeting tomorrow. So I look forward to. Going to that, um, also a question, I, uh, Jill, is there a rain contingency plan if Saturday is just. Raining, we're, we're. What, we call it off? Will there be an announcement of calling it off or are we, rain or shine event, we're coming downtown?
Um, I think it depends, depend on the severity, unfortunately, because a lot of it's gonna be up on the grass. That would probably be a little bit, um, more concerned, but. I come from the school of thought, you don't worry about it till that morning because the weather can change in a dime, so.
You're right. Question.
Yeah, if it's, if, you know, if it's a downpour, then. Even if you try to have an event and that people don't come and things become, uh, you're unable to do things and. I don't even think about it too much until about the day before.
Um, other than that, I I look forward to, uh, all the happenings of Elon. I think we have a a great, uh, holiday season. And I look forward to seeing everybody else experiencing it all, that's part of what makes Elon feel like.
Randy?
Um, just to speak around, for the church around the Christmas events, um. The Moravian Love Feast, which has been going on now for many, many years, uh, unites the.
The Meridian Love Feast, which has been going on now for many, many years, uh, unites the uni- university. Community and church together to kind of get into the Christmas spirit, it's five o'clock on this Sunday. And, uh, I want you all, you're all invited, I'm gonna be a part, and, uh. Thing I love about the Meridian Love Feast is it's a welcome for everybody, there's no, there's no exclusion, so. That's what I really think makes it the best, so, so anyway, just wanted to make sure people knew about that. Our sustainability committee will meet, uh, this Wednesday as well, and, uh, now that we have. Things like the LMO and other things, there's, uh, we're, we're basically working toward, um. Word, uh, possibility of, of an audit, energy audit, and, uh, see what that might look like. We're so excited to have Kelly, uh, Harar coming on, uh, to, uh, to be a part with us, and that will, I think, strengthen some of our partnerships. Uh, I hope that goes well, it's, with, along with this. And again, I just want to reiterate that, uh, um, you know, the partnership that we, that we try to express. Um, you know, as a community church and, and in the center of the, of the, of the town. Is, is a genuine one, we are, we've, we've had a long history of that, we want to try to continue that. Town hall meetings that have taken place in our sanctuary to all the different things that have come over the years, um. We want to continue that process, and so, I'm just glad that we can also be a presence through. At least, this just happens to be me right now, but, uh, just to have a, 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 some kind of a correlation, it's important. Thank you, that's what I have.
Yeah, just a couple of things, I, I want to thank Lori for taking the Peruvian football and dragging it across the goal line. Came off the bench and we appreciate it, a lot of, a lot of great volunteers, I was amazed, the people that stuck with the, the project and. And helped us contribute meaningfully, and it was a board. From Brad Norton University, the people who didn't even live in our town that volunteered to step up. And we're, we're grateful for their participation and, uh. And, you know, like you said, there's a lot of things happening in December, it's a great time of year, um, it's also a sad time because we're losing a lot of. Uh, great people, we're losing a fellow councilman, um, staff members, um, Phyllis is leaving to. You know, I'm just hoping it's gonna give opportunity for other people to step up and. Fill all those voids, it's gonna be important, until we fill those voids, the rest of the staff's gotta carry that. Keep things going, so. You know, encourage you to continue on and know that we're gonna, we're gonna start the new year, it's gonna be positive and, uh, the council, it's gonna be. It's gonna be a lot of challenges ahead of us, but we're, we're up for it.
Oh, I believe it's a lot of support.
Well, Diane, I, you know, go back to Diane because she and I are the only ones in this room that have been here the whole time, so. Uh, sixteen years and, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you, Diane, and. I had no idea we'd be going out at the same time, of course, you started, I did, but, uh, uh, you've been great. And, uh, just reiterate what Rich, Rich said, and you've been a very, um, very important part of our team here in the town and. Very much appreciated, and hope you enjoy your retirement, well deserved, it's not good.
Thank you. Question about the love feast, do you have the like RCP register to show up?
You're sure? Bring the love.
Just come ready for some good music, um, the, the, the Meridian Coffee in the Bun and.
Um, also, I know that Rich mentioned the park on Friday, but, um. I know Mark cannot be there, um, so. To recognize Phyllis and her contributions to the park, she will be lighting the tree for us. Um, on Friday, so, um, if y'all can be there, even if.
Saturday?
For that. Friday.
That's a best mid.
Friday at Beth Schmidt.
You, you got more than one tree.
It's from six to eight, so I think we light it. Pretty early, we get there early, yeah, I would get, I would. I will be there around five. You don't have to get there by five, but you'll be walking very far.
I'm willing.
You're not, you know, I'll park at Monty's house and walk.
I'll park at your house.
Um, I had planned to attend the dev meeting on December fourth, unfortunately, I now have to be in Charlotte for work on December fourth, so I will not be there. Um, but I will try my best to be at the first one in January. Um, and then downtown Thursday, I'll be in Charlotte on Thursday of this week, so I won't be there either, so I apologize. Um, I did send out some requests around committees and assignments for next year, so, um. If, if you have any edits, please let me know, otherwise, we will be firming that up at our next meeting, um. And I think that is it, I already said what I had to say to Diane, and I'll be here on Wednesday to celebrate you and. We'll be celebrating you at our next meeting before we send you off as well. Um, so at this time, um, I would like to request a motion for the council to meet in closed session to evaluate the performance of the town manager pursuant to general. Budget one forty-three dash three one eight point eleven, a. Motion. You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Randy did.
Randy, and for everybody who's here, we will not take any action other than to adjourn following the closed session.
I assume that you will be changing venues for the closed session, in the Emily Sharp Conference Room.
Uh, we will change venues to somewhere.
We can go into the P. Last time, the last time you guys did this, I had to sit in a freezing entrance lock. For, gosh, how long was it that they beat you up? And it's true. Yeah, it was a couple, a couple months ago, we had one that.
No, 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 the, um, I, 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 last year, around that time. When they evaluated you, but about to now, um, they stayed right here, and, um.